Okay, it's six oh six, let's get going. I respect everyone's, I want to respect everyone's time, so we are going to get started on our presentation. I'm going to stop my video while I am presenting. But there are many folks around who can help if there are any issues that come up. So let's get started. Thank you for attending tonight to share your comments on the proposed restricted parking zone changes in Eastlake. My name is Ruth Harper and I'm with the curbside management team at SDOT. Our mission at SDOT is to deliver a high-quality transportation system for Seattle with a vision of connected places and people. Parking management is a key part of this mission and vision as we balance the different needs of all the people who live, work, and travel in this area. We are committed to making Seattle equitable, safe, sustainable, and livable for everyone. Okay, couple of housekeeping tips. If you have any technical issues right now, we would like you to use the chat box specifically and only for that. It should be in the lower right-hand corner, and if you're having any issues, choose all panelists and then type your question there. Please don't use the chat box for any other questions at this time. You will have time to populate the chat later on with questions. So just for technical issues right now and someone can help you. So a little bit about our virtual hearing process. Right now is the last opportunity if you want to sign up to make public comment. Please note that we are here this evening to listen specifically to comments about the proposed RPZ changes. Though this is part of a larger Rapid Ride project, tonight's event is about the RPZ portion of the plan, and that is the topic we would like to hear from you about. Please note this presentation is being recorded and is subject to published public disclosure. You can go and click on that link, which should be in the chat if you have not yet signed up to speak and you want to. And that form will close at six thirty, and I do want, and you'll hear me say this over and over, that all comments are reviewed equally, regardless of how they are submitted. So if you don't feel like speaking, that's absolutely fine. Send us an email, call us, let us know. It doesn't have to be spoken. That doesn't give it any additional weight. So here's a little agenda for this evening. We're starting with welcome and introductions, and then I'm going to give a brief presentation about the RPZ program and how we got to this point. After the presentation, we'll move into the public comment period. The Seattle Municipal Code mandates that when considering the creation of a new RPZ or substantive changes to an existing RPZ, we hold a public hearing with an opportunity for public comment. If you'd rather not make a verbal comment tonight, as I said, that's fine. And you haven't already done so, please send an email to rpz8@seattle.gov. And we're going to put that address in the chat as well. And then after we're done with all the spoken comments, there will be a much less, more informal opportunity for questions. And again, if your question is not answered tonight, you can reach out to us by email or phone. And we can try, do our best to answer your questions, and we'll have all our contact information up on the slide at the end of the night. So I'm already behind, but let's start here with introductions. I introduce myself, Ruth Harper. I'm just going to quickly call out people who are here and ask them to introduce themselves. Jared?
Hi Ruth, thanks. Yeah, my name is Jared Thompson and I work with the curbside management team for SDOT.
Jonathan?
I'm Jonathan Williams. Side management team.
You're breaking up Jonathan, you might want to turn your video off. I don't know. Well, that was Jonathan, he's ready to turn his camera off. Okay, we'll get through this. Audra?
Thanks Ruth. Hi, my name is Audrey Brecher. I'm also with the curbside management team with SDOT. Thanks.
Mike?
Hi everyone, my name is Mike Esti and I'm the manager of curbside management at SDOT.
Daryl?
Hi, my name is Daryl Bowman. I'm a part of the communications team here at SDOT.
And Garth?
I'm Garth Merrill. I'm the capital projects, projects manager for the Rapid Ride J-Line project.
Okay, that's everyone. And the Rapid Ride J team is here as well. Will be available during the Q and A, but I do want to point out the Rapid Ride Project is at a hundred percent design, so that design is final. Okay, so it looks like we will be able to give everyone a full two minutes to speak. I think we've got about sixteen people signed up. You don't have to speak for two minutes, but you get up to two minutes to speak. And, and then we're going to try to wrap this up around seven thirty, seven forty-five, but we can go to eight o'clock if we need to. With that, let's talk a little bit about the RPZ program here in Seattle. Okay, why have RPZs? Well, RPZs ease parking congestion for residents in neighborhoods around significant demand generators such as hospitals, universities, business districts, light rail stations, so significant generators. They balance the needs of everyone to be able to use the public street. And, and they, we also recognize that curb space is a limited public resource. And so what that means really is that everybody can use the curb, but not everyone can use it at the same time. So RPZs help balance and prioritize the needs of different people who want to use the same public space. And because it's public, restricting the use of the curb requires a compelling reason. RPZ program, what it does and doesn't do. The RPZ program does limit long-term commuter parking, and it also allows short-term parking for visitors. The RPZ program does not manage demand between residents. All residents living in an RPZ are eligible for permits. The program does not discriminate between renters or homeowners, how long you've lived there or not lived there. The program also does not and cannot guarantee anyone a parking space in the public right-of-way. So that's a little bit about what they, how the program works. And now explain a little bit about the logistics of an RPZ or, and probably many of you are already familiar with how this works, but I just want to make sure everyone understands the basics. Signs like this one you see here are installed adjacent to residences in an RPZ. And residents in that RPZ can purchase permits that exempt them from the time limits, allowing them to park for up to seventy-two hours at a time, which is a city rule. Curb space is public, however, so non-permitted vehicles can generally still park, but are restricted to two hours while the zone is in effect. Each household can purchase up to four resident permits. That doesn't mean that every household has four permits. Most households don't. Because to have a permit for your vehicle, it means that your vehicle has to be registered to that RPZ eligible address. And most people in the city don't own four cars. So each household can also purchase a guest permit, and that can be used by visitors, including contractors and service providers. Each resident permit is generally ninety-five dollars for two years. Some areas are currently partially subsidized by the University of Washington in Eastlake. There is also a ten-dollar income eligible permit for qualifying individuals. And if you have a valid disabled placard or plate on your vehicle, you're exempt from the RPZ restrictions, and you do not need to purchase an RPZ permit. Motorcycles also do not need to display an RPZ permit to be exempt from the time limits. And another important thing to, to know that I don't know that people always realize is that the RPZ program operates as a cost center. It generates revenue only to cover program costs. That's it. We make no profit on this program whatsoever. It covers costs like sign installation and administration. Finally, RPZs are not completely static. So unrestricted blocks that are adjacent to existing RPZ blocks can potentially be included in a new RPZ or an existing RPZ, and they can join the zone usually through a petition process. So RPZ boundaries and blocks are not necessarily static, or we're having this hearing tonight and proposing some changes to the RPZ. So that is a general overview of the RPZ program. What is intended to do, what it does not do, how it works on the street. And now I'll give you a little background on why we are proposing changes to RPZ eight in Eastlake here tonight. And so here it is. I think everyone here is aware of the Rapid Ride J-Line project. This slide shows the extent of the project. The project upgrades the current Route seventy service by improving bus reliability. It installs new bike lanes on a direct and flat corridor. It improves pedestrian accessibility and repaves the street. And I do want to note that between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-three, the project has engaged with the public. There have been a hundred and fifteen community meetings and briefings. More than sixteen hundred and eighty-five community members have have been engaged, and emails and mailers to more than forty thousand residents and businesses have been sent. Since the parking is being removed from Eastlake, our proposed parking changes help support access in the Eastlake area. The parking study and the proposed changes align with the parking mitigation that is part of the Rapid Ride J-Line project. And again, any comments on the Rapid Ride J-Line should be directed to the project team at rapidride@seattle.gov. That's the email and their project website right there. Easy to remember. Well, Jared might put it in there, but it's seattle.gov/transportation/rapidrideline, one word. Okay, so with that, we are planning to expand RPZ eight. So I want to tell you a little bit about that. In last October, we conducted a parking occupancy study of the Eastlake neighborhood. So that study area included all the blocks with parking from the north end of Eastlake, where Fairview meets I five, down to the southern end of the neighborhood around East Gaylor Street and Eastlake Avenue East. Lot of avenues and easts. So the study method followed the standard practice for the RPZ program, which counts vehicles on a block within the study area at four AM, ten AM, two PM, and eight PM on a typical weekday. And so what this table shows you is the total demand at those times of day. So that's the occupancy count. The number of vehicles is the demand present throughout the entire study area. And then the supply column, think of it as the denominator, is the parking spaces with the parking on Eastlake removed. So we took all of that out, so that number is what's left without Eastlake. And then there's some math that shows you what the occupancy is on the street of the vehicles divided by the spaces. Now, obviously, this is an average of the entire area. It's not saying that every block will be, you know, seventy-seven percent full. Some will be more full, some will be less. We understand that, but this isn't an average. It shows us that generally there's room across the neighborhood for the demand. And, but that being said, we are proposing changes to improve the access to the neighborhood consistent with our transit, mobility, and climate goals. Okay, so here's the overall proposal. I think you've seen it in the mailer, you've seen it on our website. And this slide will also be up for reference during the comment period. And I think Jared's also going to add the link to our website in the chat in case you want to look at it on some other screen in addition to the screen that you're looking at it on right now. Okay, so first of all, blocks that are not specifically called out on this map will have no changes besides for the proposal to remove the evening RPZ restrictions. So there are new RPZ blocks. Those are shown in orange. There are new time limit blocks for all users, and those are shown in like a light blue. There are the standardizing time limits to two hours and standardizing RPZ time limits to two hours as well are also shown in little purple and brown. So those are standardizing, and then there's some paid parking at the south end shown in green. In addition, well, I should say that standard time limit restrictions are generally easier for the public to understand, and they also help parking enforcement be more efficient and effective. So that's one of the reasons for standardizing all of this. And then finally, there are new and relocated load zones on the side streets. Those are the circles to replace the ones that were previously located on Eastlake. You've already been sending us changes and we have already responded to some of those. I just didn't want to let you know that we've heard from a few people at nineteen twenty-six Fairview Avenue East, and there will be RPZ signs now on the south side of Newton. That's adjacent actually to that project. There's a little orange line on the south side of Newton, and so we've responded to that. We've also shown the load zones on Lynn. They were shown on the north. That was wrong. Now they're on the south. So that's, that's wider there on the south, so that's where they're going to be. Important note here, and I want you to know that we have received comments from the maritime industries along the southern end of Fairview with many concerns about how these proposed changes might affect their operations. So we are actively considering all of these comments. And I want to clarify, and maybe it wasn't clear on this map, but I want to clarify that the west side of Fairview, the adjacent west, the water side of Fairview, south of Newton, is not proposed to have any changes at all. So the only time limits that are proposed were on the east side. So it's very, you know, we actually draw lines on both sides and that, I hope that was clear, but maybe not that it's just on the east side. So the west side remains unrestricted, has no changes, and that leaves approximately one hundred and sixty parking spaces that are unchanged in this proposal. Okay, so where we are in this process. As I stated, we studied the area last October. We released a draft plan last month, and we've been taking comments ever since. Currently, we have received around forty comments with feedback. Some, some letters come from many people, but that's about how many different letters and emails we've received. And so that brings us to the public hearing tonight with an opportunity for spoken testimony. So after tonight, we're going to review comments and keep sending the comments. You have another ten days through August twenty-fifth to send the comments. We're accepting them via email or phone. All comments continue to be treated equally, no matter how we receive them. And we are on a tight schedule, so we plan to make a decision in September and hope to notify everybody in early fall. Okay, we're just about there. We're going to move into the public comment period. Public comments are time for you to come make a public statement on this RPZ proposal. No one is going to be answering any questions or having a dialogue with you during your comment. This is your time to talk about the proposal. There will be time, as I said, for questions and answers after the formal hearing actually closes. We don't actually, our group do a lot of these public hearings, I have to tell you, but the Seattle Municipal Code has this requirement, and so we are very careful to follow it. But we're usually a pretty informal group. So anyway, we'll be using that the form that people filled out, which I think is maybe open for six more minutes. We will call you by name in the order that you signed up to speak. Jared will call three names at once, so you can get ready, and then when it is your turn, he will unmute you so you can speak. Two formal requirements for public comments. You must state your first and last name at the beginning of your comment. So if you don't, then I might ask you to please state your first and last name. And then also you have two minutes to speak. If you approach two minutes, as it gets really close, we'll let you know that your time is, is almost up. And, and then of course, please be respectful. Okay, so there is the proposal. I'm going to leave this up during the hearing. And I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to let Jared call some names.
Okay, thanks Ruth. So I have three people coming up. The first three people, I am just searching for them. I don't see, number one, I don't see Deirdre. So I will try to call or circle back Deirdre if I see her join. We have a couple more, Maria Paracha, Angela Kline Sasser. Not seeing them in attendance either. I will see if I can find you. There are also, yes, a couple of callers here who don't have a name, so I will unmute you a little later to see if I can figure out if you're one of my missing people. Diane Lander also not with us. Cal Road, I know you are with us. So Cal Road, Mary LaMarche, and Harry Thompson will be next, and we'll try to see everyone else that I'm not seeing currently. We'll try to get to you if, if we can find you later. All right, Cal, I'm going to unmute you and we are ready to hear from you.
I'm also the business agent for Smart Local Sixty-Six Ship Metal Workers. On behalf of thousands of metal trades workers and their families across Puget Sound and the nineteen affiliate unions in the Puget Sound Metal Trades, I'm here to express our concerns with the proposed changes on, on-street parking regulations in the area near Lake Union Dry Dock, particularly the proposed two-hour time limit blocks along the southern end of Fairview Avenue East. We encourage you to listen to Lake Union Dry Docks, the working men and women they employ, and the metal trades' concerns to make changes that will allow this critical and family wage jobs to remain in Seattle and for workers to be able to park and work near their job sites. Many of these workers come from outlying areas, and most of their shifts start early, typically between five and seven AM. So transit options become difficult. With a two-hour parking limit on many of the spaces near this important shipyard employer, parking won't be possible for the workers. This proposal could devastate this critical maritime and industrial employer who pays middle-class family wages, pensions, 401Ks, full-family health care with vacations and holiday pay. Lake Union Dry Dock has been operating in the south end of Eastlake neighborhood for more than a century. Seattle has the ability to support, retain, support and retain these crucial maritime jobs, which in turns helps our nation, Washington State, and the city of Seattle core marine infrastructure. Few examples of clients of LUD, Lake Union Dry Dock, are US Navy, US Coast Guard, Washington State Ferries, the U-Dub, NOAA, and Seattle's fishing and crabbing fleets. We know SDOT is working hard to create a balance between many competing needs, and we're asking you to help preserve middle-class jobs in Seattle. I appreciate your time today and hope we can come up with a solution that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. So I am seeing a few of the people now. Why don't we go back up to Diane Lander? If you are ready, I can unmute you and we can hear from you. Hi Diane, can you hear us? All right, we'll try to, we'll try to circle back. Hobie, I believe I, I'm seeing your name now. I will unmute you. Are you ready to speak, Hobie?
Hello, my name is Hobie Stebbins, and I'm the president of Lake Union Dry Dock Company. We need a Fairview Avenue Industrial Corridor parking plan that meets the needs of Fairview's Avenue's maritime industrial businesses. Our craftspeople need personal vehicles to get to and from work, and two-hour parking restrictions on Fairview Avenue East would not be workable for our craft people. We asked SDOT delay implementation of parking revisions and work directly with us and the various neighborhood stakeholders to assure that modifications to parking don't unfairly burden or exclude anyone. Lake Union Dry Dock Company has been in business and located on this site for a hundred and four years. We imply, employ up to two hundred highly skilled craftspeople and as many as fifty additional specialty technicians and subcontractors. As was spoken before, we service vessels from the US Navy, Coast Guard, NOAA, University of Washington, Washington State Ferries, Wapakam堪 County's ferry, the Kitsap Fast Ferries, factory trawlers, and fleets of Pacific Coast tugboats. We are widely regarded as one of the most competitive shipyards on the West Coast, and our unionized workforce is the highest compensated group of shipyard craftspeople on the West Coast. Even so, most of our workforce can't afford to live close to work. The city council recently approved a new industrial zoning code to preserve industrial lands, including those occupied by Lake Union Dry Dock Company and Coastal Villages Regional Fund for industrial activities. The executives should employ parking strategies within the industrial corridor to support our maritime industries.
Thank you. One second, Toby. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, Mary LaMarche, I believe I see you. I'm going to unmute you and we are ready to hear from you.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. I'm Mary LaMarche. I live on Fairview Avenue East. I moved here in nineteen ninety, so I was involved with the first RPZ. The reason that we got RPZ is for safety. We have, when we, I don't get off work at five o'clock. I get off work at eight o'clock or nine o'clock. And to come home and not be able to park my car, have to walk over a mile with a whistle and now a phone, back then, no phone. It's a safety issue. We live here and, and we live on houseboats. We have no parking, and you might say that's not your problem. But we do pay taxes. We are part of this city, and we have no parking at all if you take our nighttime zones off. Every single night, even now, it's a hundred percent. I don't know where you got those figures. What night in October you came down here and found seventy-five percent, because I never find that. Not when all the apartments in the neighborhood are built now with no parking. It's not required anymore. It's a struggle. And it's, I think it's a right that we should have to be able to find safety and park our car. So that's, and when we had the meetings back in nineteen ninety-three, we got together up at the school and had a meeting, and people showed up. Right now, everyone's confused. All the neighbors are confused. They didn't know about the meeting. I know they got the letter, but they didn't know about the meeting tonight. So anyway, I would really hope you reconsider on this parking and keep our zone parking at night. So when we come home at night, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, we can find a place to park our car. It's total safety issue.
And that's two minutes. So thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Diane Lander, I'm going to try and come back to you. I'm going to unmute you. Are you ready to speak? Unfortunately, that Diane doesn't seem to be able to unmute it. Oh, there you are.
You can hear me now?
Yes, not super loud.
Okay, my name is Diane Lander. I am a twenty-five-year tenant on the south dock at Lake Union Dry Dock, company where I keep my boats. Two-hour parking limits are inconsistent with heavy industrial uses in the neighborhood where people are coming to work. Eight-hour shifts. Lake Union Dry Dock is a one-hundred-four-year-old, successful maritime business. They have nowhere to add parking, and they don't have any parking because they are open to the water. The city of Seattle comprehensive plan discourages uses that attract shoppers or diners or other people to linger in industrial zones. As a tenant on the dock, I need parking for more than two hours to visit my boat and to do projects. Subcontractors who I hire to work on my boat need parking. SDOT should keep unrestricted parking on Fairview, south of East Newton. And also, you should prohibit parking between two AM and five AM. Incidentally, I come to you sitting on my boat, a nineteen twenty-eight Lake Union Dreamboat, built by Lake Union Dry Dock Company in nineteen twenty- built by Lake Union Dry Dock Company in nineteen-twenty-eight. Lake Union Dry Dock Company has tremendous maritime history in Seattle and the seat Seattle should do everything possible to support this century-plus-year-old business. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So Harry Thompson. I believe I see you and I'm gonna unmute you. Are you ready to speak? Hi, go ahead, Harry.
Hi, I'm Harry Thompson. I'm a business representative for IBW, which is the executive committee of the Puget Sound Metal Trades Council. We represent the workers at Lake Union Dry Dock Company. And I just want to say basically, if we're gonna put in there two-hour parking and what you're gonna ultimately do is put this
Harry, you're
Your workers coming in. Said by putting in two-hour parking, what that's going to do is ultimately put this company out of business and that goes against the bill that the mayor just signed for industrial land uses and everything else in, in the city of Seattle. I've worked at Lake Union when I was a worker and I, I feel that we don't need to limit the parking there because we don't have the option of running out every two hours and move our cars around. I, like I said, I think what we need to do is look at this a little closer and keep the parking in the area of Lake Union as is so that our workers can, can have the opportunity to park. And for what, if I heard it correctly, you're saying that on the, the west side of Fairview, you're not gonna change parking. If that's the case, then it looks like the Lake Union parking would be okay. But, you know, when you start making changes like that, I think you do need to talk with the people that are gonna be involved, especially our maritime industry because we're, you know, we're having a hard time as it is. We don't need something else like this coming in to cause more problems for our, for our workers and our companies and that are doing business. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. And I can confirm, yes, that was said, so the west side of Fairview will not see any changes or not proposed for any changes at this time. Let's see. Richie Browning, I'm gonna unmute you. Are you ready to speak?
So Lake Union Dry Dock's been in operation for well over a century. It's part of the living history of the city of Seattle. They are very competitive with the wages they pay their employees and the benefits that they give them. We use them regularly for setting prevailing wage and that's no small feat. Due to the increase in housing costs in the Seattle area, these workers, despite the wages that they get, are unable to afford housing close to work. They have no other choice due to their schedule conflicts than to commute by automobile, carpooling as they may, spaces with the situation currently being unchanged are already limited. It's always been a struggle for them to get adequate parking. The projected spaces left over that you guys had set forth to us are inadequate. Lake Union Dry Dock Company by itself provides two hundred, two hundred members' jobs, not to mention another fifty subcontractors, so that's two hundred allegedly, potentially, two hundred and fifty spaces that need to be available to these guys for an eight-hour period or more. The schedules do fluctuate. They start at six. Sometimes they start at five-thirty, five o'clock. See, the, these workers, they keep America safe, either through repairing Navy vessels or Coast Guard. They keep, they keep the citizenry safe. They work on ferry systems that many of the citizens use to commute. Not to mention that they're an integral part of the fishing and crabbing fleet, that the repairs can be local where the economy is able to flourish from that. If they were to cease to be due to parking restrictions, then the same fleets that go there regularly would be forced to go out of the local area and thus impacting the economy negatively.
About ten seconds, Richie.
Okay, well, that's pretty much all I got then.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay. So Thomas Forsyth, I have you up next. I'm gonna unmute you. Are you ready to go?
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hi, Thomas, we can hear you.
This is Thomas Forsyth. I cannot hear you.
We can hear you.
Maybe chat at Thomas so that, that we can, oh, you did, you chatted.
Come back to you, Thomas, and try again.
But we can hear you, Thomas.
Bill Henninger, you are on next on my list. I'm gonna unmute you if you're ready to go.
Like, I'll come back later. I want to listen more.
You wanna listen? Okay, we can, we can circle back. Christopher Lehman, you're up next. I've got you unmuted if you're ready to go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me okay? I'm not hearing you, but I, I've seen your nodding, so I'll just go ahead. Yes, thank you. I, I'm, I was president of the East Lake Community Council when the RPZ was first established in the nineteen nineties. It's the most business-friendly in the city, although the, some of the changes you're making will make it less business-friendly. I was also president at the time that the current parking arrangement was agreed to by SDOT on Fairview. And that was in a very important step where the community and the marine industrial community worked together to change an unworkable policy that SDOT had laid out. They had been basically gonna take away most of the parking that was needed by the people who work at, at the marine businesses, are contractors there or who live on the, on the ships while they're being repaired. And we were able to turn that around because of thoughtful listening by SDOT. And I think that that's needed now as well. You already have listened and I think the people need to realize that this is a significant step that at least temporarily you're agreeing not to take away the, the, the current parking arrangement on the west side of Fairview, which is a great step. But I, I do have a suggestion. I think that some real creative thinking is needed to protect that because it's already not, it's, it's breaking down because there's a lot of vans parking there. There are people who literally park there in order to, you know, go to the, take the bus to the airport and leave their car there for, for days on end or weeks. There's a lot of people who not creating any, any, you know, benefit to the community. So I, I know I'm running out of time, but the proposal is simply that a hybrid RPC be established there, which, in which residents could use it in, at nighttime. But the marine community, employees, contractors and, and crews could park there during the day, if it was verified that they were in fact who they, who, they say they are. And I think that that would be a wonderful step and I, otherwise, I'm afraid that this temporary gesture you're making is not going to be sustainable. There, we have to find a way to make it permanently work. And then, and by the way.
Sorry, Christopher, that's pretty overtime, but I think we understand what, what you're saying. So thank you for your comment. And yes, we are listening to all feedback. Let's see, Lisa. Bogardis, are you with us? I've unmuted you if you're ready to go.
All set?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lisa Bogardis. I'm the Assistant Executive Secretary for the Seattle Building and Construction Trades Labor Council. I'm also a resident of the East Lake neighborhood. I live on, near the university bridge and I'm also a member of the UA Local Thirty-two Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. So I come here wearing a lot of hats and here to echo a lot of concern that I think has already been raised. On behalf of the twenty thousand construction workers and their families that we represent at the Labor Council, I'm here to echo the concerns regarding the proposed changes to on-street parking regulations in the area near the Lake Union Dry Dock, particularly the proposed new two-hour limited time blocks along the southern end of Fairview Avenue East. Again, I think I echo what you've already heard is a hundred and sixty spots is not sufficient. Many of these workers have to come from outlying areas, can't afford to live in Seattle, start their shifts early, transit's not an option. This proposal could devastate this critical maritime and industrial employer. As you've heard, I think repeated multiple times, they've been here a century providing good living wage, family wage jobs. Seattle has an opportunity to support and retain these crucial maritime and construction trades jobs, which, of which about two hundred are union jobs connected to apprenticeship programs and create economic opportunity for working people, including women, people of color, veterans, and those otherwise historically disadvantaged. We've worked, the building trades have worked productively with the city's, city's Department of Transportation and we want to support solutions here. We recognize the importance of investments and infrastructure for both roads and transit in our rapidly growing and changing region, but these aren't either-or choices. We can focus and support transit and also support and focus on good pay, keeping the maritime industry here in Seattle. We understand there's competing not, competing needs and interests here, but we ask you, please, please keep jobs as you're critical, that are, are critical to the maritime industry. Keep working people at top of, the top of your mind as you try to strike this balance moving forward. And again, a hundred and sixty parking spots is not, is not sufficient. So we would ask you to please relook at this and engage with Lake Union Dry Dock. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, Chris Bammon, you are next on my list and I've unmuted you if you're ready to go.
Can you hear me, Jared?
I can.
All right, great. Thank you. My wife and, my wife and I own a small business on the corner of East Lake and Lynn.
Chris, I'm sorry, if you could just state your first and last name.
Sorry, my name's Chris Voman. And my wife and I own a small business on the corner of East Lake and Lynn. And while part of the RRJ project is eliminating almost a hundred percent of parking for our customers, we're also now concerned about the proposed load zones where there are zero load zones on the west side of East Lake, proposed from Boston to Luisa, which is almost a three-to-four-block radius, where you have the majority of small business restaurants that, that really rely on takeout and, and deliveries companies to sustain their businesses, especially after pickup the pandemic and stuff. But when we see on here that there's zero load zones, I'm really concerned about that. And the proposed load zones, especially on the corner of Lynn and East Lake, now I noticed that they were switched from the north side of Lynn to the, to the south side. But again, those are on the busy corner on a hill going up Lynn Street towards I-5. And then the other load zone is down a hill towards Yale. So I'm, I'm hoping that you guys can go back and relook at that. The, the current load zones, there's probably two or three of them on East Lake on the west side right now where the majority of the businesses are located, not on the, the east side. That means we have to cross the busy East Lake Avenue street, which is only gonna get busier and busier, especially when you try to cut out lanes due to the bike lane. Not to mention on the corner of East Lake and Lynn, there's a new seven-story building that is gonna be supposedly torn down and start building on, which will take two to three years, which will, that, those new load zones are supposed to be right in front of there. So I'm hoping that something can be figured out with the proposed load zones, which are critical to all the businesses in the East Lake area. The other thing is, I haven't really seen or
Five seconds.
about short-term parking pickup. You know, you see a lot of those for small businesses, restaurants, for, for app-based companies. You know, a lot of us had to pivot during COVID and a lot of us rely on out-of, out-of-market people, not just to East Lake, but also Capitol Hill, South Lake Union University, that just drop in, pick up to go and off they go. So I'm hoping that, you know, those would be looked at as well. I haven't heard anything on that. And the lastly, I'll finish up real quickly. A previous caller mentioned this earlier. I don't know where the survey information came from October twenty-twenty-two. I, I would really hope that somebody would relook at the current statistics because there's no way that fifty percent of the occupancy, say between Luisa and Boston, or even further down the street to Newton, is, is, is around fifty, less than fifty percent during the daytime. When you have all those businesses, all, all the residents, not residents, but all the businesses that are open, I, I just don't see that's, how that's possible. It's gotta be over ninety percent. And, and you're, and I'm speaking from somebody that's there every day and sees the parking and talks to customers that really rely on that. So the load zones for me is a hot, hot, hot item that really needs to be relooked at because otherwise, I mean, it's critical for all of our, our businesses and, and there's big, big trucks that are offloading for everybody. And we really need that to be looked at, especially on the west side of East Lake from Luisa all the way down to Boston. Thank you.
Okay, we got you, Chris. You're overtime. Thank you. Matthew, up to you. You're next on my list. I'm gonna unmute you. Are you ready to go?
Seafood company that's homeported on East Lake. And we're strongly opposed to the changes so that we're gonna be stuck with two-hour parking. You've heard from a lot of folks about how that's gonna impact them and we're right there alongside them. Our workforce and vendors depend on having the ability to park and go to work. We're talking about hundreds of family wage jobs that are gonna be impacted. We really hope that you can sit down with the maritime industry in the area and find a workable solution. Lake Union Dry Dock is one of the businesses that holds the entire Seattle maritime sector together. They, they work on everyone's boats and you need to make it work for them. You need to make it work for us. I understand there may be some concerns, but we gotta do better. This was all a surprise to me. So please take the time to come up with some thoughtful approaches. We've heard some good ideas about having a kind of maritime industrial zone and some of the other stuff. I think that's helpful. So let's sit down and work on this. But two, for our business, it's not gonna work for Lake Union Dry Dock and it's gonna impact hundreds of jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Thomas, I see in the chat that you are following. So I'm gonna try you again and see if we can get you to comment. I've unmuted you, Thomas. Are you ready to go? Are you ready, Thomas? I think I can hear you. I'm not, not hearing you, Thomas. All right, we'll try one more time to come back to you a little later. We will try to get through everybody, so no worries. Clay, are you ready? I have you unmuted if you're ready to go.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
You can skip me. I'm all good. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. I'm gonna unmute. I have a call-in user number two. I'm gonna unmute you to see who you are, to see if you're one of my comments. Are you? Hello? Did you want to make a comment tonight? Okay, so I also have a call-in user number three. I'm gonna unmute you. Are, are, do you want to make a comment tonight? Okay, so can you just tell us your name and you can let us know what you want to, what you want to say? Okay, maybe that was a no. Not hearing. We'll see. Anyone else on my list here? Thomas, I'm gonna try you one last time here and if not, we can maybe reach out via email and, and grab your comment that way. You are unmuted now. You wanna give it a go? Thomas, are you there? Okay. If anybody Oh, I, we had Casey, I believe, from the chat. So Casey, you are last on my list. You are unmuted and we're ready to hear from you.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'm on the complete opposite end of the south.
Casey, would you mind stating your first and last name?
Sure. Casey Sullivan.
Thank you.
And I live in 3217 Eastlake Avenue East. We're on the very north end of Eastlake, obviously, right by the bridge. I think we're the only two buildings that are not part of the RPZ because the freeway goes basically over our building. So currently, we're not being considered part of the RPZ because we're on the east side of I-5 for about 500 feet. But I would like to propose on the, what would it be called? Fairview side, north of Allison. We would like that to be, we, we support industry. We want industry. We, if there's some boating, there's Sea Ray down there, Union, and we have no problem having that be industry from eight to five. But it would be nice if we could be part of that zone, anything after five to five in the morning, where people come home and trying to take, look for a place to park for safety. That, that would be considered some sort of zone in that area, especially on the west side of, excuse me, the east side of Fairview, because all the businesses are on the west side. But after five, it would be nice if it was a neighborhood parking only. So people didn't park there, or even people going to the airport could park there, or people taking the jeep, the, the bus could park there because it's open game. But we would like to be considered a part of the RPZ with only two buildings on Eastlake that's not, I think. So, and Audra's been very patient and listening to me, so thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Casey. Manning, I'm going to call on you next. You are unmuted, and we're ready to hear from you.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Manning Webb with Labor's Local 252. As a representative of Local 252, I represent many of the workers that work at Lake Union Dry Dock and would like to reiterate some of the statements that have already been heard. Lake Union Dry Dock's been a good work, or a good employer since 1919. They consistently employ hundreds of hard-working, tax-paying men and women each year. These employees not only work within the city, they also spend their hard-earned money in the city, thus becoming a valuable contributor to the overall economy of Seattle. Due to the rapid development and of the existed limited space and the increasing property values, these men and women have no, no viable means other than to re, to commute to work in their own vehicle. These employees also have dedicated their careers and lives to Lake Union Dry Dock, which has dedicated its life to the city of Seattle. The average tenure of the laborers in the, in Lake Union Dry Dock is 10 years or more. The proposed displacement of the parking in the maritime industrial area would not only have a profound impact on the working men and women, but it would also be detrimental to the day-to-day operations of Lake Union Dry Dock, who's been an outstanding employer for working citizens of Seattle. And simple, the terms need to maintain the level of parking that is currently available as essential and necessary. So with that, I would just implore in partnership with, with Lake Union Dry Dock, Local 252, with the employer, the commission to reevaluate and partner with Lake Union and the other businesses surrounding this area to come up with a better and viable solution for the employees and their business.
Okay, thank you, Manning. That is everybody I have on my list. Short a couple who I cannot find in our attendee list, so I think we're, Ruth, we are ready to move on.
Okay. Um, so what that does is close the formal hearing portion of tonight's event. And so we are now at Q and A, and I'm going to turn my video on and say hi to people. You can, okay, you can see me now, even though I don't see me. But anyway, um, so go ahead. And if you've, if you go ahead and choose all panelists and type a question into the chat, and Jared's going to look at the questions in the order received, and one of us will respond. And also, if there's similar questions, he'll probably summarize them. And I guess I'd say that a lot of what we heard already, I don't know that you necessarily need to put it in a question again, because we will try to speak to some of that of what we heard anyway. But if you want to go ahead and put that in the chat, certainly feel free to do that. And I just want to say a few things from what I've heard, and not necessarily in the right order that I've heard them. But load zones and Chris, we we know, we know who, who you are. People within the background here have said you've got the coffee shop, and we want to work with you. Our intention is that, that things make sense. Okay, so outside of this meeting, we are going to get in touch with you. At the, let's see if I can find the, the address here. Sorry, eastlakecoffeecafe@gmail.com. That's the email that we have, and we're going to reach out to you and talk to you about load zones and maybe five-minute other zones and, and things like that. So yeah, this hearing is really about the RPZ, so that's the, the absolute thing we have to talk about. Outside of that, we have certainly the time and ability to talk about that. So we're going to reach out to you. Okay, let's see, what else? Lake Union Dry Dock, we hear you all, and I guess I, I want to go back to the map really quickly and, and show you that, you know, we are sorry if this was confusing. There, you can see in some places that we've got like lines on both sides of the street. So anytime there's a line here, it's literally on just one side of the street. So the little blue line snaking down here at the bottom was just on the east side of the street, which has way fewer parking spaces than the ones on the west side of the street. I mean, right now, there's 160 spaces. We're not taking any of them away. There's not more than 160. That, that's our count. You know, it's, you know that area. It's hard to count cars, and maybe some days there's 170 cars that squeeze in there. But we're not doing anything to the west side of the street, south of Newton, and that is where the vast majority of the parking is. So again, my apologies if the map didn't make that clear. I'm sorry. There are some time limits already on the east side of Fairview there, I believe, between Garfield and Blaine. There's not that many spaces on the east side. And so we are looking at the east side, so we're not ignoring you as well as on the east side. We're here, we hear you, and we're going to look at the east side and, and talk to you. And I think that there are conversations that are already happening that some of you are aware of outside of this, so we're going to, we're looking at those. But again, I think it was, I'm trying to remember the person who said we need more than 160. When we say 160, we think that's all there are right now on the west side, so we're not touching the west side. That is the big message here, and I apologize for any confusions. Okay. Let's see.
I think, yeah, Ruth, Mike would like to jump in and just make
Mike, jump in.
Quick statement to you.
Mostly just to reaffirm what Ruth already said. First, I want to thank everybody for joining us here tonight and providing, you know, written comments in advance and the comments during the public hearing in, in this portion. As Ruth has mentioned, we've certainly heard folks loud and clear, especially on the south end of Fairview, and that's, that's why we do these, which is, which is important, which is to hear directly from you all about potential impacts to changes we're making to what is, again, a proposal. We've already, you know, been talking a little bit about how to think about the south end of Fairview in the way that you all have sort of spoken to a little bit. So I just, again, want to reaffirm everything Ruth just described that we hear you, and I think we're going to go back and take a look at things and see where we go from there.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. So we do have a, we do have a question. Are we ready to go into questions, Ruth, or did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the chats. Hard for me to look at everything, but I see something from Olga. Olga, you could also
I'll, I'll run through the questions for you and
Or yeah, she could just stick her email in there as well, so that we can be sure and, and have her contact information. I see Manning says, please put the Mac back up. There's the Mac.
So Cal Road has a question. You know, thank you for not changing the west side of Fairview. What is happening to the east side? I think the short answer there, Cal, is that we are going to revisit the proposal. I think we'll probably be talking with some folks more about that, and so nothing final tonight coming out of that discussion. Clay, new two-hour time limit blocks, does that mean resident passes that we will have to get? So the two-hour time limited blocks are just general time restrictions. What they do is they offer short-term access for customers, people kind of stopping in. They're just two hours straight for everyone. The RPZ permits don't exempt you on those specific signed blocks. Olga would like to discuss load zones on Lynn Street. Olga, do you have a more specific question that you can maybe throw in the chat there?
Or Olga, if you could just stick your email in this, or if you could just email us at, what's our email address, Jared?
I think it would be better if you wanted to email us. If you don't have a question in specific, I'll put it in the chat. You can email us, and we can definitely work with you more there, so that our project emails just dropped in the chat for you, if that works better. Question, Chris Sleman, when is Estat proposing to implement these changes? At best, it will be highly disruptive. Why the hurry? So we are planning to sort of align sign installation changes with the Rapid Ride Project, which I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, the earliest that is slated for is March 2024. So we would be working alongside that timeline to have changes in place before then, not necessarily in the next few weeks or months. Olga is going to email us. Thank you, Olga. We will reach out with you on email. Ben, to, to us all, so what is the rationale for removing the no parking except by zone eight evening restrictions? Jonathan, would, would you like to take that?
Sure. Does my audio sound okay?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Sorry, it was a little garbled earlier. Yeah, I can respond to that. I do also want to zoom out a little bit. You know, we are working in coordination with the Rapid Ride J-Line Project. You know, the overall goal at Estat, we want to enhance mobility and access. It will be a, a pretty big transit improvement for the neighborhood, as I understand, plan to run 24/7 and provide bike facilities as well. So hopefully, you know, some employees that can serve an option and also support folks that may be moving to the neighborhood that don't have parking or don't have a car. The no parking except by permit is implemented in the early 90s here. The original RPZ was around UW commuters, which it will continue to restrict access for UW commuters. It was a very different, frankly, kind of zoning designation at the time. The urban village strategy came around the 2010s. It really changed the zoning in this area. We have since moved away, Estat, from the really restrictive condition of no parking except by permit. The exception has been in, in Zone 13, Lower Queen Anne. There's a lot of on-street paid parking, off-street options, and also a major venue that has specific traffic management requirements. Really, the intent here is trying to make the best use of the streets we have. We have a limited amount of right-of-way and wanting to provide some level of balance for those that may have, you know, visitors in the evening or people visiting local businesses, or perhaps employees where transit doesn't work for them if they're working until two or three. So it, it's really trying to provide a little flexibility. We are also adding new areas of RPZ parking and some other tools that should increase daytime turnover. For example, you know, these time limits, frankly, they go out of effect if they go until six at four o'clock, similarly with paid parking. So there are some other tools that we think will increase turnover during the day that will provide some more available parking in the evening.
Thanks, Jonathan. Daryl, do you want to maybe talk to a little bit of the load zones that were, will be able to remain on Eastlake Avenue?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And I just want to say thank you to everyone for their comments. And obviously, we will, as part of the larger Rapid Ride J-Line Project, continue to reach out to the community and work with everyone that's raised concerns here. I know Chris was asking earlier about a particular section, and, and if you go to the Rapid Ride J-Line website, you can actually scroll down to the project material section and just hit on that expansion bar, that cross, and it will drop down to a group of drawings, which you can zoom in or download. And it does show the East Hamlin to East Lynn section and East Boston to Gala Street. And you can see on those drawings that we have found a way to put in some areas for vehicle usage, and we will be coming out. And it sounds like you'll be helping us to the community and determining the best usage of those places, whether it be short-term drop-off pickup of food, whether it's load zones, whether it's parking. So we want to continue to engage with the community. We have listened, we have found some areas where we can alleviate some of those concerns, and we're happy to continue those conversations. But those plans are online. And like I said, we will continue to reach out and have community meetings as we work towards construction. Thank you.
And I put that link in the chat, Daryl, just now.
Thank you so much.
And I think, Jerry, I was looking back at the questions that crosswalk.
Oh, I think I missed that. So who do I get into contact with about crosswalk installation along Eastlake Avenue East?
Is that the project team too, the Rapid Ride team? Should they reach out to you guys about crosswalks?
I would say I'm going to drop in the Rapid Ride email here, Clay, and I think noting the, the intersections that you're thinking about and the concerns you have, and they could help root to the appropriate folks who would review. Did I, did I miss any other questions? Let's see.
Bill? We closed the hearing, Bill, but if we missed you and you want to talk, I, I'm happy to hear from Bill. It's, I'm being informal.
Still, no, that's okay, Bill. If you want, I can unmute you if you'd like to, to let your comment. Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you are muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I passed because I just wanted to listen to more of what was said, and then I didn't know how to get back on. But just a little, little bit of history here is that I've been coming to these meetings since the Rapid Ride was first had discussions up at the school and at the Wooden Boat, and everyone since, and the majority of the Eastlake people that are at these meetings do not want this project. But they still have gone on. We did not ask for this changing of our RPZs, but you're doing it anyway. It is, I would suggest that the people, you and whoever the other people are that are involved with the project actually walk into the neighborhood. You know, I would gladly host a coffee hour with my neighbors to get really, because a lot of people feel this is a done deal, that they don't even come to this meeting because you've already made decisions. And yeah, you'll get information back from Lake Union Dry Dock. But walk to the businesses. You heard somebody from Eastlake, go to Seraphina, talk to them. They, most of their clientele doesn't live in the neighborhood. And you're taking away parking, and they can't figure out where their load zone's going to be. So anyway, that is my suggestion. I thank you for at least offering this, but I really think there needs to be more delving into the neighborhood to get the people's feedback that are not at this meeting. Sorry, that's my
Okay, thank you, Bill. I'm not seeing any further questions. I'm not seeing any further questions. So with that, I think might give it a minute or so.
So I just want to, oh, you know what I said? I had put the map back up, but then I, I said that I put this slide up as well, which is just more information, you know, where you can see things, so. And these are nice, short URLs that maybe you can jot down, or you don't have to jot them down because we're actually gonna put this presentation up on the website this week sometime, so there's information about RPZ permits, there's information about this proposal for parking changes, there's information about the Rapid Ride J-Line and our email addresses and again, this is just one part of the, of the process. Tonight is not everything. We've heard from people, we will continue to hear from people. We're taking comments through the 25th. We're gonna reach out to some people that we've connected with tonight. So, so thank you all. I appreciate it and any other questions? I'm not seeing questions. All right, Chris, let's see. That's correct, Chris, so we don't we have a RPZ business permit program in the city that is exceedingly small and we basically only give permits to employees that are in areas that the streets are less than 50% full, which as you can imagine is an extremely small program. So we are not giving RPZ permits to businesses. However, we are also leaving the vast majority of that parking alone, so. Anyway, I just wanted to answer that business permit question that I see. All right, so we're getting comments. I appreciate the comments. We will continue to engage, yep. Right, so that, yeah, I mean, this is mostly about the RPZ, so. Every, every employee in, every employer in Capitol Hill wants RPZ permits as well and we haven't issued any of them, so you know, it's, it's a very small program, the business program, and we try to encourage employees to generally, you know, the, one of the points of the RPZ program is to restrict commuter parking, so that is part of the RPZ program. Okay, I'm gonna stop talking. Or Mike or Jonathan, do you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're here, we're not going anywhere.
We, we are here to answer questions really about RPZ parking and some of the curb space priorities, but we are not here to talk about the Rapid Ride J-Line Project as a whole. So we're really not gonna be able to address those.
Okay. All right, everyone. It's cooling off outside. Go outside and enjoy, right?
Yes, anyway. Do, we do appreciate that everyone showed up to let us know what's going on. It is hard to understand everything going on in a neighborhood and, and we do appreciate the feedback to help inform the projects. So hope you all have a good night. And if you do have any other questions, our Eastlake website will have this presentation along with contact information where you can email us and reach us after this meeting as well. Chris, I might see maybe another question here.
Jonathan, can you see the chat?
I could, so Casey asks, is the goal of the RPZ to encourage people to ride mass transit or bikes, bikes at the expense of parking in the Eastlake area? Massive building in the area with very limited parking spots at the new buildings.
So that is a question I think more about development in the city without parking, which I think Jonathan addressed.
I guess, I mean, they asked the goal of the program. I mean, traditionally, the RPZ and as it was put in Eastlake is to prevent, you know, hide-and-ride commuters or folks that are driving into the neighborhood, perhaps going to UW or South Lake Union to work. So, you know, it doesn't create new parking. We're working within the limited right-of-way space we have. It, it provides a preference for, for long-term parking for, for residents, so.
Other questions? Ruth, do you see any other questions?
Um. Chris, if you want to send an email to us, I think we can try to talk about it, but I think I'm not exa, I just, why don't you send us an email, Chris? If you could just send us an email to rpc8@seattle.gov, that would be great.
A survey.
No, Manning, we have not done that survey, nor do we, nor are we here to sort of talk about that tonight. Mike, can you see any of these comments?
Yeah, I have, so I appreciate all of them. I know this is challenging to engage in communication a little bit, written comments and, and in this format, I, Ruth made a suggestion that for those that are a little more complicated or substantive, it would be helpful for us just to receive them in a way that you have a little more space to write than just the chat. So if you could send those to, to one of the email addresses listed, I think that would be probably most helpful for us.
And I'll put that in the chat one more time so people can grab it and not seeing any other questions. All right. I appreciate everybody showing up. Thank you so much. And please be in touch if you have further comments. The email probably would be a good venue for us to talk more at length.